Thank you. All right, board members, I see one, two, three, and me makes four, and we need Supervisor Semidion. And Nancy, when Supervisor Semidion appears, if you'll please take a roll call vote to reestablish the existence of a quorum.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you very much. Paul Lorenz, I see that you're there, you'll be reporting on item 20 in just a moment. I'll give Supervisor Semidion.
Supervisor Semidion may be having some technical difficulties because I do not see him in the room.
Okay. Let's resume our meeting. And we will start with item number 20, which is a report back on the nursing recruitment, retention, and safety at our Santa Clara Valley Medical Center.
Thank you, President Wasserman, members of the board. Let me catch my breath if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, no, it's an exciting thing to come back to a board meeting. I totally understand that.
Well, you know, one of the things that I will share with the board is that I just had the opportunity to give.
Supervisor apologies, I think we still need to take a roll call to.
Yes, please do, Supervisor Semidion is here.
Yes.
Go right ahead, Nancy.
Supervisor Lee.
Present.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Semidion.
Here.
Vice President Ellenberg.
I'm here, I want to make sure Paul gets back to his story of whatever he's excited about, so don't just want to lose that.
You will, if you know Paul, it's coming. And Supervisor Wasserman is here too, thank you Nancy.
And President Wasserman.
Thank you, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I just had the opportunity to come down from the hospital floor, from OB department. We started a program called the Daisy Ward, which acknowledges nurses that do extraordinary things for our patients. And, you know, I'll give more information on the Daisy Ward later, but I think this is one of the things that I want to point out that the most we can do in terms of supporting our nurse is actually to acknowledge the incredible work they did and show that they bring immense value to the system. So I could not miss the opportunity to be up there along with the other nurse leaders to acknowledge these nurses. And so, of course, I'm out of breath, out of shape, running back to the board meeting here, but, you know, I just can't, you know, say enough about the importance of this topic. We all know that our nurses get support in a number of different ways. Two areas which we as a healthcare system are heavily focused on is the ability to recruit and retain our nurses. And the other area that I think we all appreciate is that they are under immense pressure. And then when you throw on top of that some of the difficulties and challenges they have in dealing with patients that have behavioral issues, both from a psychiatric standpoint, but also from a clinical standpoint, and they continue day in and day out, provide compassionate and caring support for our patients, and that's not an easy thing to do. So the best we can do is not only acknowledge them, but also to focus on those areas where we can make their lives a little bit more easier in terms of the day-to-day care. Clearly, recruitment retention is a big area. You know, throughout the pandemic, I think we all appreciate the entire healthcare industry has come under a lot of stress. And that stress translates directly into our workforce. Our nurses, as I mentioned, work very hard, and to the extent that we can support them, express how valuable they are to the system, the greater likelihood that we can retain them from all levels of leadership, including the board, and I think they feel it and they know that. So to bring attention to this item is important. I can also share with you, if you look at our numbers from an industry standpoint, you know, we're faring pretty well in terms of retention. We can do a lot better in terms of recruitment, we know that, acknowledge that, and I think we have taken steps to do that along with the Employment Service Agency. So we acknowledge that there are areas in room for improvement. The other thing is that, given the COVID situation, we know that many of our patients present with behavioral issues, the risk is greater. But if you look at our numbers, we've been able to maintain, you know, a steady number of incidents. Problem is that any one incident is too many. And so our ability to work together with labor, with our labor partners, with our nurses to develop programs and initiatives is really where the focus should be and has been. So with that being said, I know John Mills is on the line with me. Jill Sprague would join in a second, although we're here and available to answer any questions regarding our report.
Thank you, Jill and John, both good to see you. Why don't we go with public speakers first, and then we'll go to Vice President Ellenberg, and we'll go from there. Nancy?
Our next speaker is RNPA, I am unmuting you, please accept the unmute, and you will have one minute to speak, the timer will start when you begin speaking. RNPA, you are unmuted, you can begin.
Please go ahead and speak.
That is our only speaker.
Good afternoon, Bottle Supervisor, this is Alan Kamara, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We are at a disadvantage here when we're giving one minute to address such a huge topic that nurses work so hard for. But all we can say is, just looking at this report, the question that we want to ask the Bottle Supervisors is, if all this report that you're looking at right now are all true, why are the nurses complaining? So that takes me to so much of the report that I cannot address in one minute, unfortunately. But what we're saying is, the nursing union and the nurses identify two major problems for them, all we ask the Bottle Supervisors, help us resolve these issues. Violence at the workplace has risen up tremendously. These data are not accurate, our nurses are so understaffed, they are so understaffed, they don't even have time to report. And I'm seeing here where it says crisis, post-crisis report, we don't even have the opportunity when we have incidents to have a report or to talk about it, that has never happened. So.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That concludes our public comment.
I show, oh, there, okay, one just went away, thank you. Vice President Allenberg, you were first, and Supervisor Chavez.
Thanks. I do appreciate that, and hearing from RNPA and from the administrative administrations report, I have just a few questions and then some requests to make. I do understand that there's a likelihood that assaults on nurses in particular are under-reported for myriad of myriad reasons. I've been told that it's common knowledge to anticipate being assaulted by an aggravated patient, that that's just part of a nurse's job, and that that contributes to under-reporting, as well as a sense of discouragement regarding the likelihood of any follow-up to the reporting. And I'd really like to see how, I'll say we, but I really mean the hospital administration in partnership with the nurses, create a safe and encouraging place for staff to report assaults, as it's really critical for us to have that data. With respect to gathering accurate data of instances of workplace violence, I'm not sure whether to direct this to Paul or Jill or someone else, do you have a sense of how often assaults may be happening that aren't reported? And what are specific steps that are being taken to encourage reporting?
Thank you, Paul.
All right, and Jill can add on to this, but, you know, I think, let me start off by expressing to the board in response to this question that I think industry-wide, there are challenges with hospitals working with their staff and reporting. So even if you look at our statistics, and I would also agree that there are situations that aren't reported that should be reported. And I think the same would be true for other healthcare facilities, and we know that in speaking to our association and our counterparts. So industry-wide, and specifically our valley, you know, we want to encourage reporting of all levels and types of incidents. You know, if you look at the numbers, typically you would see, if we've been successful in encouraging staff to report, you start to see a trend of numbers and the volume going up. And that can be attributed to two things, one is that there is now staff that are reporting, and number two, that, you know, it continues to be a challenge for the system to address. So, you know, what we try to do is through the leadership and through communication with staff, a reinforced importance of this, and not only for their safety, so that we can help manage the situation going forward, but also for their peers. I think RNPA is right in the sense that we have to work together, and to your comments, Supervisor, to encourage this type of activity. And it's really coming down to our ability to build trust and direct communication around these issues with our staff.
Right, thanks for that. What is the, I have several more questions. What is the follow-up once a report is made? Obviously, we're collecting the data, in whatever cases are appropriate, we're reporting it to OSHA, but what is the feedback loop as far as the reporter is concerned?
If the individual reports the situation, and there's a process for which they report, the expectation is the quality department follows up, but more specifically works with the department manager to ensure that the employee has received the appropriate support that they need. At the time of the incident, the expectation is that the manager, you know, if there's an injury involved, immediately provide support. Also, let the employee know what resources are available to them, and that's specific to the employee. What we also try to do is have a debrief, given the level and type of incident that occurs. And that debrief involves staff that were present, that end or responded to the situation, to ensure that we understand the entire situation. Typically in healthcare, we call that a root cause analysis, so from a system standpoint, what could have we done differently or better relative to the incident itself? So we learn from those debriefs, from a system standpoint, we also are given the opportunity to interact with staff to ensure that, you know, that their concerns are being heard and listened to.
And are those debriefs being conducted in, with regard to every single incident? The policy, which sounds like a very good one, and the on-the-ground implementation?
So, Jill, can you speak to this? But there are two parts to this, so inpatient unit, depending on the severity or the level of the incident, the manager can institute a briefing and work with leadership and the staff to conduct that debriefing, if you will. Bring EAP and bring any other support stakeholders, if you will, into the process. In EAP and BAP, the expectation is that they debrief on a regular basis, on a per incident basis, given the level and severities of many of the incidents that include, they're included in BAP and EPS. This was brought up by RNPA in the last meeting, I understand, and that's something that we need to follow up on, because it needs to be consistently done in support of our staff.
Thank you, Jill, can you add?
Sure. So as far as the inpatient, and as Paul mentioned, depending on the severity, we do have an inpatient debriefing team, that whether it is an assault, or a behavioral verbal assault, or, you know, maybe a tragic death, we have a team, not, I mean, just of death of a patient or traumatic code. We have a team that does go and they set up several debriefings to catch all the staff. So that's to deal with the emotional, you know, well-being of the staff, that's usually at the request of the team. But then, we also, as Paul said, quality and risk, also do a follow-up and work with the manager, except to investigate what happened. And, you know, I know we've had the share meet with, with certain individuals that have had concerns with leadership also, to help answer questions and what the process is, and I just, I just want to say, you know, we, I think we all have the same common goals, and I absolutely want a partnership with RNPA and how we can decrease, because none of us want, you know, our nurses, our doctors, none of us want to see anyone get hurt. I can tell you, on a national level, this is a very topic of concern. I'm also still connected to the burn centers across the country, and it is like a major concern. Really kind of bubbling up right now with this pandemic, but it was an issue prior to the pandemic. So I know we're all trying to do whatever we can to address this.
Thanks for that, Jill. I have no doubt in my mind that everyone has the same goals. I'm just looking as we all talk about, you know, continuous improvement and iteration, and that's a theme in my own office, I have to say, of how we can do better, the things that we know we want to do. One suggestion I'd like to make is perhaps creating a survey that is used as a follow-up when people report incidents of violence, so that we can hear, did they get what they need? Did they have the debrief? Did they get whatever supports they needed? Were they satisfied with administration's response? And if not, what do we still need to be doing to provide them with the support that they, that they, that they really do need? Last question before I make just a couple of additional requests. Are the protective service officers and acute psychiatric services and hospital and clinic staff all trained together in how to respond to patients that have, that, that may have assaulted staff in the past, or for whatever reason are at high risk for assault? Are those departments trained together?
Well, for psych, we have done some joint training. That hasn't happened in the inpatient setting, so there may absolutely be an opportunity there, but we have, we have done it with the psych services. Oh, sorry, they were, the trainings were virtual during the pandemic, but I just wanted to note that they have gone back into live person trainings.
That's good to hear, and I'm fully aware that I'm an outsider offering two or three cents worth of opinions here, but thinking also that communication really is so key to ensuring success and safety. And if the staff and the protective service officers are expected to de-escalate or respond to a a patient who is behaving violently together, then I would think that receiving training together and having opportunities to discuss possible scenarios would really help build trust and also avoid communication or any kind of disharmony between the two, between the two departments. I do think that there is tremendous potential for real integration and partnerships, and I think about this, you know, certainly not only with regard to our nurses, but with our bargaining partners and departments across the county. I want to just finish with some more general comments about, about the nurses. It is for sure not a secret that we are facing a national shortage of nurses. That's one of the reasons that Supervisor Chavez and I introduced a referral addressing not only workforce development concerns, but workforce safety concerns. And I'd like to ask that administration consider extra help and per diem nurses for the critical care training program prior to any nurses from outside the county, so that we can help retain our current nurses. And second, I just want to revisit the issue of pandemic pay for part-time workers. We've all discussed that many of our part-time nurses worked full-time during the pandemic. We talked about this issue under the ARPA item at the last board meeting, but the board didn't provide any specific direction. And my goal is to ensure that the nurses and other identically situated county employees receive that full 2,500 pandemic pay bonus. So, Dr. Smith, what is the appropriate path, or James, for this board to discuss and potentially direct administration regarding nurses and any other part-time employees that had been asked to and did work full-time hours during COVID?
Dr. Smith and James?
We're scheduled to come back to the board in the second meeting in December to give a report back about the extra help strategy, and that would be a time period where the board could direct us differently or make suggestions. So I would say that's the best time.
Okay, thank you very much, then, I will wait for that, and appreciate consideration of the two suggestions that I directed to Paul and Jill. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you. So thank you for the report, and I want to make a few few recommendations as well. Sorry, I'm just looking for my notes real quick. I want to be able to make a motion to receive the report with additional direction, and thank you, and let me just share with that that additional direction is. I want to, Supervisor Allenberg, I'm going to start both with the, first with the hiring process, and then with the public safety issues. So in December, what I would like to request is that we receive an off-agenda report with the timeline for the engagement of the external firms. The report should respond to the five-year reserve idea, and the original referral that was intended to ensure funds are set aside for, to address workplace safety. And second, I'd like to ask staff to report to the board during mid-year with more information on the status of the engagement with the external firms, and a thorough analysis of the vacancies within the hospital system, including turnover rates and retention. Third, because nurses' retention is so critical to ensure we continue to offer the highest quality care, and I appreciate the ideas you suggested, I'm therefore requesting the staff share a progress report during mid-year on the development of the retention program, such as the clinical ladder and critical care programs. Once an external firm has been chosen to support its work, this staff, I want to make sure that the that the union, RNPA, is included in discussions with ideas, so that, you know, to help with recruitment. And then, just two other things that I would like to add based on the discussion that I've heard today. One is that, that we need to address the presence of the public safety officers on site, both how many of them, how available they are, and their training. And then, what I would like to ask that gets included is that we have a Harvey Rose audit, the actual responses. And the reason for this, but what I mean is the responses to workplace violence, both the reporting and the support services. And the reason for this is that I think part of what needs to be strengthened is the relationship between our staff and our management, particularly with the nurses, and I think having both the external firm and an outside auditor, giving just, you know, direct, clear observations will help all of us right-size the direction we're going. And then, I think the other thing I just wanted to say, and really, Dr. Smith, this is more to you and to Paul than to Jill, and part of the reason that, you know, I think that, Jill, your point about what the trends that are being seen across the country is such a critical acknowledgement that our environment, that there's just a high level of agitation in our environments, and you know, we're seeing it in grocery stores, we're seeing it in restaurants, we're seeing it, you know, we're seeing it in road rage. It's just, we have to acknowledge that that's part of the environment that we're operating in. And then the second thing, I think that's really critical to acknowledge, is that when people don't feel well and they have to wait, there's this higher level of agitation, and then when people are waiting with a loved one, you add this other level of tension. And I think that we need to take a deeper dive into, you know, wait times, which is actually part of staffing, and it's also part of, I know something that you're already doing, is you're looking at, you know, new ways of procedures, and always trying to make things run more smoothly, I recognize that. I just lift that up because I think we're in a new era. And I think absent really being able to address that in our workplaces, we're going to have a different kind of retention problem. And again, something that's being seen all over the country, right, people opting to be out of the workforce instead of in it for those reasons of stress. So so, Susan, those would be my recommended additions.
Thank you, is that fine with the second?
It is.
Thank you, I'm just going to echo my support for whatever we can do to retain, recruit, and protect our nurses. That's extremely important to me, like, I'm proud of the retention rate that we have compared to the national average. Paul, I appreciate your perspective that we can always do better. I think increasing the safety, we can always do better. And recruitment's a tough thing. You know, my daughter's 33, 15 years ago, when she was 18, you know, she asked me, Dad, what do you think I should do? And I said, well, 15 years ago, there was a nursing shortage. I said, why don't you become a nurse? She didn't happen to become a nurse, but as far as I know, there's been a nursing shortage for 15 years.
Always.
Nationwide, and the more schools, you know, go Spartans, San Jose State, the more schools that can have classes to train. to train people to get their their nursing license, the better. And I hope that increases. I hope the universities recognize the shortage and to have more and more classes. Because the patients experience 90% of the time when they're at a hospital is with the nurse. And that's important. And I'm glad to see all the support that we all seem to have to try and make things better. But every single hospital wants to get more nurses and keep more nurses. So it's it's a competitive world there. Before I call for a vote, Paul, your hand is up. Did you have one additional comment?
If I may, Supervisor.
Yes.
So one of the things that's, I think, important to understand about the nursing industry and the number of individuals that are entering into nursing is that we have great success in recruiting new nurses. The number of job applications we receive and the number of individual nurses that want to work for your healthcare system is is very large. Our challenge and challenge with most hospitals is that Supervisor Chavez indicated many of the experienced nurses, skilled nurses are leaving the industry or simply they're retiring and it's their time to move on. What we've acknowledged as a system is that we're large enough to be begin to develop and grow our own. We've had conversations with RNPA and, you know, John Mills and ESA about how we continue to develop programs to develop our nurses so that we can move them up to the next level so they can be intensive care nurses, burn nurses, that they can work in our emergency departments. And so we have to start to change our focus to not only on recruitment, but really developing our own nurses internally within the organization. And that's something that we're focused on and will start to keep your, will continue to keep your board informed upon our efforts.
Thank you very much. Board members, I'm going to take this vote and Supervisor Ellenberg, I'm going to need you to take over the meeting. I've got a a family matter that I need to step away from the meeting for right now. Nancy, will you please call for the question?
Supervisor Lee?
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Hi.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Westerman?
Yes, as well. Thank you. And my apologies to everybody. Vice President Ellenberg, you've got the helm.
Not a problem. Thank you. I believe that the next item is 23, no, 22, 22.
Yes, that's correct.
Apologies, I don't have the, I'm trying to organize the agenda in front of me with the item.
Yes, and this was something I pulled off Supervisor Ellenberg, if it's helpful.
Fantastic.
Happy to jump in.
Take it from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I I wanted to, first of all, I want to say a very special and very sincere thank you to you all thinking creatively about what what next steps there are in the homeownership areas in particular. I am concerned about the the approach relative to ownership. And what I'm most concerned about is actually ownership of properties and then the maintenance of the the affordability, even if you have folks get enough money and out of a project they sell or a home they sell to move on to another location. Could you walk me through the the benchmark that you put in and the why of that?
Thank you, Supervisor Chavez. If we can, we actually have a short presentation.
Oh, great. That'd be great. Thank you.
And I also wanted to take the time to introduce the board to Natalie Monk. She's our Housing and Community Development Division Manager. She's been with our office for about six months now and doing all of the work of Measure A and creatively thinking about new ways to accelerate development, come up with some homeownership ideas. So I will defer to her. She will provide the presentation.
Thanks, Consuelo. Okay. On June 22, staff presented three ideas for pilot projects which could increase affordable homeownership opportunities in the county, including cooperative housing focused on ELI households, new large scale affordable homeownership development, and infill development on small sites up to 20 homes. These project types are incorporated into the new proposed cooperative housing and homeownership project types in the proposed updates to our NOFA. We're proposing a new goal of 400 units associated with these two project types. We're also updating the guidelines to amend requirements for type two and three projects and to clarify and add requirements for community engagement and for the acquisition and rehab of existing housing. Type two is currently for projects with an average affordability of 45% AMI with a 33% set aside for supportive housing. We're proposing to lower this to a 25% set aside to encourage more integrated development. Type three is currently for projects with a 25% set aside for individuals with intellectual and or developmental disabilities and their families. We're proposing to amend this to projects with at least 10 IDB units and a maximum of 25% IDB units. This is based on community feedback that the proposed change is expected to lead to an overall increase in IDB units distributed across the county. Type four is a new proposed project type for developments with at least 20 rapid rehousing units. In this case, the county's financial contribution may be capped at $4 million. Type five is a new proposed project type for cooperative housing projects. This chart shows example scenarios of how extremely low income, very low income, low and moderate income households could be served by this project type. Households would have an income of no more than $181,000. They would pay TCAC rent, which would be set at 30% of their income. And they would accept expect to receive approximately $25,000 to $45,000 in equity if they moved out after 10 years. This type of cooperative housing offers very limited equity compared to homeownership, but it can make a meaningful difference to households with the lowest incomes. Type six is a new proposed project type for affordable homeownership projects. This chart shows example scenarios of how very low income, low income and moderate income households could be served by this project type. Households would have an income of less than $181,000. They would pay an affordable mortgage, which would be set at 30% of their income. And they would expect to receive roughly $75,000 to $230,000 in equity if they sold their home after 10 years. The administration is also requesting authorization to apply for $5 million in Cal Home program funding from the state. These funds could be used to support a variety of homeownership opportunities within the county. And that that concludes our report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Supervisor Chavez, do you have follow up questions before I look to the public for speakers? Or do you want to wait?
Oh, the public's fine. Thank you. And I'll go.
Great. It looks like we have two speakers on this item. Let's let's do a minute each, please. Thank you.
Our speaker is Paul Soto. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute. You will have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Yes, Paul Soto, horseshoe. Thank you for that that report. It it looks like you're really trying to get creative and you're brainstorming like a lot of different ideas in order to to secure residents of different incomes here in the city and the county. But the, if if we're not factoring in the generational consequences of of redlining, when I looked at the, when I looked at the how much equity a person would be able to get after 10 years, I looked at that and there are homes right now in redline areas that are getting that in one year. And I think that we need to kind of like have some open conversations about that, about how these properties were able to acquire that kind of equity. Thank you.
Next speaker is Blair Beekman. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman here. I'm really impressed with this item as well. Thank you for it. Yeah, I I I it's really important to me, the ideas of future ideas of mixed income ideas that you're trying to navigate and better understand at this time. These, this offers incredible ideas towards a future of, I guess it's called reparations. I mean, that could be one way to look at it. It is trying to define past generations, how past generations can have a a certain place, I suppose. It's good thinking, it sounds like. And and you're you're in a really good direction that may be related to COPA ideas as well. Good luck in in further practices of these ideas. Thank you.
Next speaker is Victor Vasquez. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good afternoon. Want to say thank you for the presentation. My name is Victor Vasquez at Somos Mayfair. And we at Somos, we've been looking at all the different solutions. And we also believe that cooperative housing is an excellent way for us to think about how do we prevent future homelessness? And how do we start thinking about both prevention and intervention? I'll continue to think about that, but actually take some action because the ideas of like potentially building new homes, but also acquiring properties already in the market to to address our displacement crisis. It's it's a better approach in our perspective because it addresses a current need, an urgent need that people are being displaced. It's only aspirated by the realities of COVID. And we hope to work with you and the staff to continue to make this a reality, not only within the county framework, but also with and with our city partners. And hopefully this could happen in East San Jose and other areas impacted by displacement.
That includes public comment.
Thank you very much. Coming back to my colleagues, are there any further comments or questions? Supervisor Chavez?
Thank you. The reason that I asked this to be heard were two issues. One, I think this is such a significant program of the county. I think it's really important that these these kinds of reports not necessarily go on consent. And also so everybody understands what we are saying yes to or no to. What I was hoping you could do is if you could talk just for a moment about the new project type four. And and then just to remind me that the overall in each category, we still have funding. I mean, I'm sorry, we still have income restrictions, right? So we have that, when I'm looking at the 800 million, that multifamily is for extremely low and very low income households. So that 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 doesn't change. It's the it's the mechanisms you're using for funding or the kind of product you're creating availability for. Is that accurate?
That's correct, Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you. And does that, so on the new project type, is that what you were referring to as being more along the lines of a cooperative?
No, the project type four is essentially the same type of multifamily rental. In short, we have a few projects across the county that don't meet the Measure A requirement exactly the way we would like them to. But there are other efforts in that respective city where, when you think about, you know, the 10 projects in any one city, collectively, they meet the Measure A requirement. But right now, they won't apply for Measure A funding or any of our county funding, with the exception of the IDB dollars, because they don't necessarily want to have a large number of supportive housing units in their in their building. And so this would provide an opportunity for us. Pre Measure A, this is more or less the way we were funding supportive housing across the county. Small investment in our dollars, and it would yield anywhere between 20 and 30 units at a given site. The cooperative model, Supervisor Chavez?
I'm sorry, Natalie, if I just could go back to this. So the source of this funding for for the new project type is not Measure A money, then?
It could be Supervisor Chavez. And sorry, Natalie and I are in the same room, room trying to use one. It it can be. So we've actually, all of our housing funds available throughout the county are in one NOFA. So we utilize our home dollars, CDBG dollars, Measure A. In 2002, 2003, the board at the time approved an affordable housing fund. We get repayments from that funding source. And so we use a variety of funding sources, leverage home key dollars and anything really at our disposal to leverage to increase production. And this would basically give a new opportunity to developers to rapidly increase the production of units that are reserved for rapid rehousing. So it can include Measure A.
So what I, I think that, let me just share with you all and my colleagues a concern that I have, which is that this, this is not, it's not clear from reading this report that that's the, that we're, that we're, how we're approaching this. And so I, and I don't, there's a, there is a section that talks about, you know, how we're using our our NOFAs, but all the funding sources that are going into it. And here's the reason I'm I'm really wanting to press on this. At some point, we're going to be running out of Measure A funds. And it's hard for me to understand from looking at this report, what are we focused on relative to Measure A? What goes on after Measure A is is used up? And does it still meet the higher goals that we have around permanent supportive housing for people who are homeless? And so, and I know, I know that you all have a lot of moving parts. So I recognize that this may seem very, very, oh, no, it's so super automatic to you, but that that is not really what I understood from reviewing this. The second thing I just want to say again for my colleagues is that there there is an interest, at least I have an interest and have had one on the on the for sale product of seeing how much of that money that gets invested can come back into that pool of money. And the reason that's so critical is that, you know, here it says we have 25 million programmed and 25 million left to program. Of that 25 million total amount programmed, we've probably spent, what, less than 5 million so far? Yeah?
Correct.
So, and and this to me is an opportunity to have an ongoing fund, either for first time home buyer programming or being able to take what comes back from that and invest it into other parts of our program. And so I can't see that that thread through here. And if that's something else that's still being considered, I I would want to better understand that. And, you know, and again, I think from a general perspective, I think the direction is fine and creative. And I really appreciate you all digging in and thinking about it. But I am really trying to better understand the, the, you know, the the evolution of, you know, where we are today and then where we're going to be going relative to what kinds of resources we're going to have over what period of time. So as an example, I don't know if you know Consuelo off the top of your head. And I know that the first time home buyer money, we have to take out just for this one discussion, is that when we will have depleted everything but the first time home buyer program and perhaps even the moderate income. I know we're a little bit more behind on that, too. But do you have a sense of timing on when the 800 million will be committed?
Yes, Supervisor, we're scheduled or planning to come back to the board in January with the next round of projects. And at that time, we are going to present to you all what we have left after the eighth round. We are leveraging, our county is a recipient of no place like home dollars directly from the state. We just received notification that we're getting another $30 million.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to leverage other funding opportunities. For instance, the $5 million that we're, is part of the recommended action today to bring in $5 million that we can leverage for homeownership opportunities. So in January, we do propose to bring with, bring to the board an update of everything related to Measure A from the seven objectives you all approved, the geographic distribution of Measure A projects across the county and where the gaps are, and re and a look at how much money is left to program from that 800 million. I'm sorry, left to allocate for projects.
Thank you. And then the the 20, the yeah, I think well, I think that that, you know, I I won't bore my colleagues with more questions. I'll get more time with you all. But I I do, the reason I did want to pull this is I do think this is such an important program. And I I am a little bit concerned that that I don't yet understand, as we're using up the the money that we have right now, whether or not we're going to meet our permanent supportive housing goals, as that was the primary driver of of Measure A. And so I just want to better And so I just want to better understand that. And then I think your points about being innovative and creative, and I've seen you do that with our CDTP money too. I've, you know, you've kind of cobbled it all together, but really better understanding longer term what those funding streams are. And then what is our capacity going to be post Measure A? Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to move this item forward?
Yes, I will do that. Thank you.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments from other supervisors? If not, let's do a roll call vote please.
Supervisor Lee?
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian?
Hi.
Vice President Allenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman? Still away. Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to move now to item 23, which was held from November 2nd. This is to receive a report relating to the public release of audio visual recordings of the incident involving Andrew Hogan and the status of county compliance with consent decrees involving the jail. Do we have a presentation on this item or are we going right to questions and comments?
Supervisor, we're available for questions and comments. The report indicates that we've provided the videos and they're available on the county website.
Supervisors Semidian and Lee, as this was your referral, do you wish to have a report made?
I have questions when the time is appropriate, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, then it sounds like you're good without a report. So let's go to the public first and see if there are public comments on this item. And let's do a minute per commenter, please.
First speaker is Paul Soto. I am enuding you. Please accept the unmute. You will have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. If you can repeat please specifically where the location is of that film. I'd like to, I'd like to review it if I could please. Secondly, is that I am counting on you Supervisor Semidian. When you had given some comments about a couple of months ago with regard to the jails, you articulated, I mean precisely that you at least understand the issues. And you, you articulated it perfectly in terms of what the issues are, what the county's accountability is and what it is that we need to see from you. I mean, because I've seen what, what happened with Andrew, that's, that's common practice. I've seen that for decades. It's just that this one was caught on film and he really, really hurt himself and injured himself. But there's countless incidences that have never been reported that are at that level of severity. Thank you.
Next speaker is Blair Beekman. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. I think this was an item that was on your agendas a few weeks or months ago. Now, it was the first time that I, I think I tried to mention the ideas that there, there needs to be an important, robust and healthy new exploration, I think. And the ideas of open and accountable practices with biometric camera technology. I know you have the policies in place for that work. I think it's a time to review those good practices and, and bring them out and, and what we can develop for ourselves and our future community practices. It can be a lot of help for ourselves and make a language understandable how to talk about subject matter for ourselves in our future that we are entering into. And so thanks for your time to hear myself on this item.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. I'll go to Supervisor Semidian.
Thank you. Let me ask first, following up on the request from one of the speakers, if the county council or someone from the county council's office could describe again for folks where they can view the relevant video that has now been made public?
It is available at jailreforms.sccgov.org. That's jailreforms.sccgov.org. There's a direct link in the ledge file which is available online.
Thank you. And let me also ask, Madam Chair, do we know if Mr. Janaco from the OIR group who serves as our Office of Corrections, ah, there he is available. Thank you. Well, let me just say, I think the video is as gut wrenching today, a year and a half later as it was when members of the board first had the opportunity to review it. I think it is important that it be publicly available in part so there can be no denial of just what kind of conduct took place that left one of our inmates brain damaged for the rest of his life and cost $10 million in settlement fees. And I would encourage members of the public with a caution that it really is disturbing video. That if they want to get some sense of the nature of the problem here, videos number 24 through 30 are perhaps most relevant to the discussion that I'm hoping to begin again right now. Let me ask the county council's office a question about the sharing of these videos with relevant agencies at our first meeting on this topic back in mid-August, I believe. The board took action to share information, including these videos with the U.S. Department of Justice, State Attorney General's Office, the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury and the State's Fair Political Practices Commission, also known as the FPPC. Is it, has that, has that information been shared yet? Mr. Williams, or is that still a work in progress? And if so, do you have a rough timeline on when that information will be shared, including this video?
That information has not been shared yet. We were waiting to, of course, have the videos and everything else done. So we could send one packet with everything together. Now that this item has been done, we'll be putting that together. I don't have a specific timeline, but probably the next, next few weeks, we should be able to get those packets together and sent out and we will copy the board on those packets.
Thank you. Turning to Mr. Janaco, if I may, through the chair from the OIR group who serves as our Office of Correction Law Enforcement Monitoring entity. Mr. Janaco, as I have indicated previously at these board meetings, given the fact that we have someone who was in the care of our, of our jails, brain damaged for the rest of his life and a $10 million settlement. It, it was not surprising to me that an Internal Affairs investigation was opened. It was quite surprising to me a year and a half ago to learn that that investigation was shut down by someone in the sheriff's department. And so I had asked you and others have asked as well, who shut down the Internal Affairs investigation and why? And because you had characterized that in your report of September the 14th this year as highly unusual. And I'm looking back at that report and looking at the language of your report, it says, and I'm going to read verbatim here just to make sure I get it right. "The sheriff through her attorney has expressly declined to provide us any information relating to the Internal Affairs investigation that her agency appears to have initiated and then deactivated." "Without this information, we cannot answer this board's question about whether any meaningful Internal Affairs investigation was conducted and/or the appropriate disciplinary action taken. Accordingly, we plan to use our subpoena authority granted by this board to compel the sheriff to provide the critical information." And then later on in the same report of September 2021, you indicate that based on available information, we believe, as did the sheriff's office initially, that a formal Internal Affairs investigation was necessary. Moreover, the heretofore unexplained closure of the sheriff's office administrative case is highly irregular and problematic. And you further indicate the Internal Affairs investigation appears to have been abruptly halted before the investigation could be completed or any findings made. Once an Internal Affairs investigation is initiated, it should be the extraordinary circumstance that would cause it to be closed without a finding. And because the sheriff's office has refused to provide Oaklaim with any documents relating to the Internal Affairs case or access to Internal Affairs leadership, we have no ability to independently evaluate the rationale for the sheriff's office closure of the case. And again, it mentions, "We therefore intend to exercise our subpoena authority as needed to carry out our responsibilities." And there is a footnote at page 25 that specifically talks about the political environment swirling around the case and the closure of the Internal Affairs investigation. So my question for you today is, where are you in that process of exercising subpoena power? Or has the information regarding who shut it down and why with respect to the Internal Affairs investigation been shared with you without subpoena? Where are we in that process or?
Supervisor Semidian, you read a report that I authored in the middle of September. All of what you read is still accurate as of today. We have not been provided any information relating to the shutdown of the Internal Affairs investigation voluntarily by the sheriff's office or the sheriff. So we are still at a standstill with regard to accessing that information voluntarily. As we indicated in our memo, we intend to issue a subpoena for the Internal Affairs information and for access to Internal Affairs personnel as well. And I've been working with county council on this. This is the first time this office would be issuing the subpoena. There were some details. But my understanding is that the issuance of that subpoena is imminent.
All right. So by imminent, we mean within a matter of days or a couple of weeks at most?
I hope so, sir. I have been, just received a communication this morning from county council. And I wouldn't, I would say it's going to be days more than weeks for sure.
Let me turn to the county council, if I may, through the chair and ask Mr. Williams if he can provide us any more clarity or not yet at this point?
That's consistent with my understanding. Days, not weeks.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful to know. And Mr. Williams and Mr. Janaco, I'm looking at this footnote 29 on page 25 of the September report. And I'm going to read it verbatim again, Madam Chair, because it, I think, makes the case for why it is so important that the public have an explanation as to what happened or didn't in connection with the Internal Affairs investigation that was commenced but then shut down. This is from Oaklaim's report of September 14th, 2021. Says publicly available information suggests that the investigation may have been irregular in other ways that merit attention. Public sources indicate that one of the supervising officers involved in the incident was a leader of the Correctional Peace Officers Association, which provided significant support for the sheriff's reelection. Public sources also indicate that the sheriff promoted that officer soon after the election and just a few months after the incident involving Mr. Hogan. These facts taken together with the unexplained closure of the Internal Affairs investigation certainly raise the question of whether the officer's position in the union and its support for the sheriff's political campaign played a role in the decision to deactivate the Internal Affairs investigation. But those concerns cannot be definitively assessed without Oaklaim obtaining the requested information and access to sheriff's supervisory Internal Affairs personnel. So Mr. Williams and Mr. Janaco, I just want to exhort you again to pursue the subpoena if that is the only means by which the county and the public can have a fuller understanding of who shut down the Internal Affairs investigation and why, particularly given the political context that has been identified by the folks at Oaklaim. The relevance of all this, of course, to the tapes is that the tapes show just horrific the incident was, why the county felt it should settle for $10 million, the highest amount in the history of such cases in our county. And, and why we need to know what happened to the IA investigation, why there was not a completed Internal Affairs investigation and some measure of accountability in this instance. I just want to close, Madam Chair and colleagues, by saying I think it is important not to paint with too broad a brush, as I have said before. There were individuals involved in this tragedy who were confronted with very difficult circumstances and who comported themselves actually quite, quite well under very, very difficult circumstances. I want to acknowledge that. I think that is the appropriate and respectful thing to do. I also want to make plain that I'm trying to get an understanding of individual behavior. And so when I say don't paint with too broad a brush, that means let's not suggest that any larger group of individuals or organization is accountable in cases where they may not be accountable. But again, until and unless we have clarity about why the Internal Affairs investigation was shut down, we will not have answers to any of those questions. And even a brief view of these videos should compel us to demand answers and accountability. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of brief comments, but want to first look to Supervisors Chavez and Lee to see if there's anything that you would like to ask or add.
No, thank you.
Okay.
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you both. I realize that we have a lot to cover today, but I do want to make just two, two comments. The conversation that I've just been listening to really relates as well to my referral with Supervisor Lee that sought to bring to the public information about use of force incidents. And also just makes me think again about the importance of naming a chief of corrections as Supervisor Chavez mentioned earlier and shifting Internal Affairs investigation to the chief of corrections. So the board can have clearer access to that information. Is that something Michael or Dr. Smith can speak briefly to?
Well, I, maybe I can speak to that. Yeah, maybe I can speak to that.
Please.
The question has to do with who's the appointing authority for the relevant personnel. And so if we're talking about peace officers or correctional deputies, that is the sheriff. And so the appointment or not of the chief of correction won't change the, that function. But it depends on, you know, how, how positions are staffed and structured. So for example, there used to be correctional staff that reported to the chief of correction instead of the sheriff and they didn't have the same status under state law. But those folks would, for example, then report to the chief of correction and be subject to IA by the chief of correction.
So if this board desired to initiate that process, what would be the appropriate pathway?
Well, we've brought forward an item several times on about an annual basis regarding the structure of the jails. And so the board would need to adopt an ordinance moving and transferring functions from the sheriff to the Department of Correction and take the other kind of related steps. And we've outlined the various issues around that. When we brought those items forward, that item will come again to the board sometime this upcoming spring.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, James. I didn't realize that, that it was an annual occurrence somehow. Just one more point that I want to make today because it feels important to just put on the record some concerns I have about the way we approach. put on the record some concerns I have about the way we approach these consent decree updates. The board has received regular updates through the years. I've slowly been moving toward a realization that we really need to rethink the fundamental premise of addressing the consent decree. It's interesting to me that the lawsuit, which was supposedly brought to protect the best interests, interests of the plaintiffs, mostly concludes that some harmful practices must continue, just in a slightly less harmful manner, rather than redirecting people from being made vulnerable to that harm entirely. And I want to just highlight one aspect of the report that states construct directs us to construct a new jail with three percent ADA capacity, or if the county elects not to build a new jail, meet and confer with plaintiffs' counsel about additional construction needs in the existing facilities to achieve ADA compliance. I just want to remind everyone that we are not required to create, to create a new jail. That is, that is one way of addressing the consent decree, but not the only option available to us. So that doesn't need a response or comment. Just wanted to put that on the record for today. And Supervisor Semidian, would you like to make a motion on this item?
With thanks to Mr. Williams and his team at County Council and to Mr. Janaco for their work. I would move approval of the recommended action, which is simply to receive the report.
And is there a second?
Have a second.
Thank you so much. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Julie.
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian? Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman? Still away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So colleagues, let me ask for some input here. It is four minutes until two. The redistricting item number thirteen cannot be held before two P M., but doesn't necessarily need to be held at two P M. So I'm offering the options of either continuing with our agenda and holding thirteen for, for last. I see vigorous nods from Supervisor Lee or pausing our agenda, handling thirteen at two P M. and then returning to the remainder. Otto just made his, his preference clear. Supervisors Chavez and Semidian?
I agree with, I believe I agree with Supervisor Lee's head nodding. I, I think our board can make our way with just four of us through the remaining other items. I do think we probably want all five members together, if possible, for the redistrict conversation.
Fair enough. Supervisor Chavez, any objections to that?
Agreed.
All right, leading by democracy here. That brings us to items sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one, which Supervisor Chavez asked to hear concurrently after removing them from the consent calendar.
Thank you. I wanted to just give Chief Garnett an opportunity to walk us through a brief presentation so that everybody knows what we're doing here. Thanks, Chief.
Sure, absolutely happy to do so. Good afternoon, board members. So today, we're going to walk you through our draft Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grant Annual Plan that has had a lot of, lot of input and we're super duper proud of it. Presenting today is Dr. Holly Child from our department, Grace Gonzalez from Behavioral Health. Judge Lucero was on the line to answer any questions that people might have. A lot of my staff and I'm on here, more behavioral health staffer on here. And with that, let's go to Holly.
Good afternoon, Vice President Ellenberg and members of the board. As you know, my name is Holly Child and I'm the Director for Research and Development for the Probation Department. And I want to pause a moment and give my partner for today's presentation an opportunity to present herself.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Grace Gonzalez and I am the Program Manager with Behavioral Health overseeing our Secure Youth Treatment Facility. Nice to meet you.
And today, our focus is to present an overview of the local juvenile justice realignment plan. For those of you who are listening in today, you can find the full plan on page fourteen thirty-nine of the Agenda Packet. We're going to do our best today to summarize and honor the work that was done. This plan, there's a lot of really great detailed information and we're going to give you a high level view of today's plan. We'll also have reserved some time at the end for questions. So to give everybody on today's call some background, through Senate Bills eight twenty-three and ninety-two, the legislator is closing the department, the Division of Juvenile Justice within the Department of Corrections. That means that those facilities that were available for youth in our county who went to long-term facilities, they're no longer taking youth. So I want to be just a little bit clarifying for the audience who's listening today is that the youth who are currently at DJJ are not coming back to the county. This is really impacting the youth who are newly committed as of July first, two thousand and twenty-one. So we're only looking kind of forward in this program. And it will make sure we reiterate that a few times as we go through today's presentation. The other thing that's really wonderful about this legislation is really on the line with a lot of the juvenile justice form work that's happening in the county, really thinking about natural supports, communities, families. This legislation, this idea of bringing these programs locally gives an opportunity to have our youth closer to home where they can have more connections with family and community and to really have supports that are built during their time with us so that when they do go home, back to their home communities, they have those connections in place and those relationships and trust built. So one of the things that we're going to talk about today is the plan. There is a plan that each county is required to submit to the Office of Youth and Community Restoration by January first of two thousand and twenty-two. This plan will be updated annually and presented to that, to that department on May first of every year. The intent of the plan. So during the short time for implementation, it's important to know that this is kind of an initial plan. And the plan will evolve as we work towards our goals and we learn more about the program through our youth, families, and community partners. We've already made some modifications and adjustments, hearing from some of the youth who are in the program. Currently, I know, for example, our chief was actually in the facility yesterday who talked with all the youth to get feedback. So we're definitely staying connected with the voices and ensuring that we're meeting everyone's needs. The program is developed in collaboration with Behavioral Health and in collaboration with other various stakeholders. The, the unit will be staffed with both probation group counselors and behavioral health staff. We're anticipating about fifteen to thirty youth per year at any given time within two units in the Juvenile Hall. Given the timing of the passage and the implementation of the Senate Bills, the Juvenile Hall facility was the only facility that was available that was both secure and appropriately rated for the population being served. It's really important to note that the county doesn't own the ranch. The, at the state owns the ranch and we currently lease the ranch from the state as part of the California Local Youthful Offender Rehabilitation. It's a long word, a long title, Facility Construction Funding Program via Senate Bill eighty-one. The county was able to construct the ranch, which is considered a minimum security facility that supports youth who are committed under certain offenses. The probation department would need approval from the California Board of State and Community Corrections, also known as BSCC, if you hear the acronym, and SB eight twenty-one bondholders to adjust the intended use of the James Ranch to allow our county to use it as a secure youth treatment facility. So although probation and behavioral health are presenting today, the plan was developed by a wide array of community partners and stakeholders. Their voice, time, and commitment are truly valued, and it couldn't have been done without this collaborative approach. So I want to show you some of the stakeholders that we engaged during this time. We have had some really wonderful partnerships with some of our community, community-based organizations who've actually gone to DJJ and talked with youth who are currently in the program. As I said before, we've also been really speaking with the youth who are currently in the program, getting lifetime feedback. We've had an opportunity to speak with youth who had been at DJJ previously to incorporate their feedback. We also conducted various community forums. We had some that were open to the general public. We also made sure that we had forums that were conducted in Spanish and also focused for young adults who potentially would have shared life experience to provide feedback. These focus groups were, were in collaboration with the Behavioral Health Department. They were hosted by the MIG Group and we had approximately a hundred and fifty people participate. Additionally, in October, we had the Burns Institute and the National Center for Youth Law. They hosted a community engagement session via Zoom to discuss the draft plan with youth, community stakeholders, and advocates. And they provided those findings to the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council at the end of October, and that feedback was integrated into the plan. So let's talk a little bit about kind of the body that works with this. Under the legislation, we do have what's called the Juvenile Justice Realignment Subcommittee. And we have had a very numerous meetings. Meetings of the Subcommittee are public. The agendas can be accessed through the County of Santa Clara County Meeting Portal. All meetings are held via Zoom currently, and the meeting links are posted on the probation website in addition to the county meeting portal. Additionally, the probation department, we have a webpage dedicated to the implementation of the new program where community members or other partners can also find information. Let's talk a little bit about the purpose of the program. So it's very different than what we're talking about with the ranch in terms of the, the youth who are being served. The intent of this particular program is to provide a therapeutic healing environment where youth can build and strengthen resilience and protective factors. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about these youth and some of the challenges that they face in a little bit. It's important first, though, to tell you what are the four program values that we are focused on during this work with the youth. These values were developed from feedback from youth via forums and also feedback from community partners and approved by the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. And those program values are community, integrity, love, and respect. We try to bring those forward in all of our meetings. We try to lead with those in our discussions. And we try to remember that those are the core values as we're working through this plan and implementing the program. The state provided a planned template and the counties are required to follow this template. There are eight sections to that plan. And today, the presentation will be organized by those sections so that you can flow along if you have the actual plan printed out. And so you'll see that that's the organization of today's presentation. The legislation requires each county to add a Subcommittee to their Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council to oversee the plan related to the local SB eight twenty-three program. You'll see here on this slide, these are the people who are currently serving on the Subcommittee. The Subcommittee composition was defined by the legislation and the county was able to double the minimum required community members. And we're actually fortunate to have two youth who have volunteered to serve on the committee. They've actually been incredibly helpful and we're incredibly grateful for their contributions. They've actually provided some really meaningful information back to us. So let's talk about the target population of this program. We're really looking at youth who have very high, complex needs or fourteen and older. These youth are found to be wards of the court based upon their most serious, the most recent serious offense. We call them seven oh seven B offenses. And on the next slide, I'm going to go through some examples to explain what those offenses are. In order to be eligible for this program, the court must find that a less restrictive alternative is not appropriate for the youth and set a baseline and maximum term of commitment. Youth whose cases originate in juvenile court can remain in a juvenile facility until age twenty-five with limited exceptions. So something to keep in mind is the probation department can petition the juvenile court to transfer a youth who is age nineteen and older to an adult facility. It's important to note that most of the youth adjudicated for seven oh seven B offenses in our county are currently committed to the county's William F. James Ranch, also referred to as the James Ranch. And the intent of the plan for the new SB eight twenty-three program is to maintain that practice and only recommend commitments to the new program for youth who would have previously been recommended for commitment to DJJ. We really want to ensure that we are not net widening and we are not putting youth in, in a higher level program than we need to. So let's talk about examples of seven oh seven B offenses. This is probably really helpful for members of the community who are listening in today. So for reference, the, the offenses that you see on the slide are referred to in practice as seven oh seven B offenses. And a little bit, I'm going to be presenting what do the offenses look like for youth who are currently at the DJJ program at the state so that you kind of have a general idea of the offenses that we'll be looking at for youth locally. So just for comparison, this is information that are on youth who've actually gone to DJJ, which is the state program. And what you'll see that between January first of two thousand and fifteen and December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, sixty-four duplicated youth were placed at DJJ. Most of the youth are male and Latino. Only, only a small percentage of them had previous ranch history. And thirteen of those who left the ranch actually left successfully. For thirty youth who exited DJJ during the timeframe of this data, the average length of time was two years. And so you'll see, if you look at the timeline, you can see the number of youth who were committed to DJJ by year. And what's really interesting is during this time, we only had six girls who were committed to DJJ during this timeframe. And during the same time period, there was an average of ten girls committed to the ranch program and Juvenile Hall respectively. However, that doesn't negate the need for special programming for girls in our custody and which will be discussed in the program section of the plan along with the probation's partnership with Vera's Institute, their initiative to end girls incarceration, which has been very successful in our county and contributed to the low number of commitments in custodial settings. It's also really important to note that on average, between thirteen and fifteen percent of youth in custodial settings are LGBTQ and/or gender non-conforming. And the program will continue the county's efforts to be sensitive and responsive to the needs of these youth. So this slide is to give you an example. These are the offenses of youth who are currently at DJ, DJJ, which is at the state facility. And of the thirty youth who are currently there, you'll see that thirty-three percent are there for offenses such as murder or attempted murder. Eight are there for carjacking, four are there for robbery. And then you'll see the rest are there for a variety of offenses. From this list, you can see that the offenses that we're dealing with are very significant in nature. And a lot of these youth have had multiple years of trauma and complex needs that need to be addressed. This is information that we gather from our risk, need, and responsiveness assessment here within probation. And it's to really give you an idea of the challenges these youth are facing. You'll see that a lot of our youth have significant behavioral health needs. They struggle with pro-social relationships. There are family issues that need support. We also have youth that, some youth that have substance use issues that are connected to their, their offenses. We have some issues with school and caregiver supervision. And so our focus for the program, funding and services, is really focused on the most prominent needs that you have. How do we offer them the coping skills and the resiliency that they need in order to be successful once they're released back into the home communities? For these reasons, our program is really being focused on our collaboration with behavioral health. They're such an essential part of success for these youth. And we're really going to have a huge focus on family and caregiver connections. I'd like to now turn the presentation over to my colleague Grace, who's really going to share more about the program interventions and services.
Thank you, Holly. So as previously mentioned, the purpose of the program is to provide a therapeutic, trauma-informed environment. Many, if not all, the youth currently in custody have had traumatic experiences. We are dedicated to providing care that is trauma-informed and embrace the core guiding principles, which include understanding trauma and stress, compassion and dependability, safety and stability, collaboration and empowerment, cultural humility and equity, and resilience and recovery. By practicing the core principles and providing services with the healing perspective, we can promote a climate and culture of wellness cultivated for youth, family members, and staff. Next slide, please. Additionally, gender-responsive and cultural services are offered to all youth. Listed on the slide are just some of the services we currently provide. The Young Women's Freedom Center and Girl Scouts are specific programming offered to our girls. The probation department has other enrichment program opportunities that continue to be developed in coordination with our partners. Services will be provided in a culturally responsive manner to be developed in coordination that is culturally responsive to the entire population, demonstrating fair and equitable practices for participants with diverse identities, including gender, age, religion, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, and disability. Next slide. There will be four educational and vocational pathways that are offered to youth. The county is working with multiple partners, San Jose City College, Foothill, DeAnza, to name a few, to develop different opportunities. The four pathways are outlined here. And I just want to point out that these pathways may be completed simultaneously depending on the youth's needs and interest. Each youth will be supported through a partnership with the County Office of Education to develop an education plan that's inclusive of high school diploma and college or career pathways. For example, we have a youth who's about fifty credits shy from obtaining his high school diploma. He shared an interest in learning more about his culture and heritage. So our County Office of Education Counselor assisted him with an with enrollment in a Mexican-American history class through San Jose City College. The youth is ecstatic because not only is he learning about his heritage, but is also earning credits as he continues to work towards his high school diploma. Next slide. So there are several vocational programs offered. Some programs offer certification within twelve months, such as culinary, computer programming, pet grooming, and personal training. Other programs take more than a year to complete the certification process, which includes auto body or mechanic, barber program, and clean energy. Next slide. In addition to the vocational and educational services, youths are offered a wide array of enrichment activities and supportive services. These programs will be available to all the youth in juvenile hall, specifically the secure youth treatment youth. And these activities were developed with feedback from the youth in juvenile hall on their interest, feedback from stakeholder forums, and research on evidence-based practices. Other enrichment program opportunities will be developed in coordination with our partners. Our current secure track youths have begun the music production program, and they're really enjoying it. Both youth and staff are excited about the programs and services that are underway. Next slide. Behavioral Health Management System. So this level system is based on the evidence-based practice, positive behavioral interventions, and supports. We call it PBIS. It allows for youth to learn coping skills through positive reinforcement. Through this system, youths are provided with a seamless transition into our secure track facility. And the youths are given incentives and goal setting that are done at every level, regardless of the commitment time. A key component of this behavioral health management system is that it increases collaboration, goal setting between the youth and the staff using consistent progress reporting. And progression through the level system will require that each youth is actively engaged. Next slide. While we all agree that it's imperative that we assist the youth in rehabilitation and successfully reintegrating into the community, we must not forget the victims of the offenses. Victim or survivors are connected to an advocate that informs them of their rights, bridges them to different system officials, and links them to services for ongoing emotional support. Also provide restorative justice services, such as victim awareness workshops, victim offender mediation, and healing circles. These offer opportunities and spaces that allow for healing for both the victim and the offender. Next slide. So existing enrichment programming and services are available through our MAC Center, our multi-agency assessment center, that will also be accessible to our secure track youth. Procurement for additional programs services will occur as the gaps are being identified. But most likely, in the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, RFVPs will be released. However, in the meantime, all cycle procurements are possible to meet some more emergent needs. Next slide. So the Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grant Funds will be used to augment behavioral health staff to support the operations of the facility. These include the Program Manager One, a clinician, rehabilitation counselor, and psychosocial occupational therapist. We've obviously filled the Program Manager One position, but I'm also excited to announce we have filled the rehab counselor position. And we're actively recruiting for the clinician and occupational therapist. Next slide. So the Behavioral Health Services Department will continue to conduct comprehensive screenings and assessments that include a behavioral risk assessment and integrated assessment, which includes both substance use and mental health. The assessments will include the youth's needs, strengths, trauma history, readiness for change, safety, and assessment for cognitive, emotional, and behavioral symptoms. Part of the assessment process includes partnering with our team psychiatrists to determine any potential benefits of psychotropic medication. One of the practices that we're using is the University of Cincinnati Corrections Institute, UCCI Cognitive Behavioral Interventions. This approach will teach youth strategies to manage risk factors in a way that is developmentally appropriate. This includes the implementation of groups that are co-facilitated by behavioral health and probation. And also include individual sessions with the group counselors. We're also utilizing Bruce Perry's neuro-sequential model as part of the assessment and clinical care planning process. Not sure if you're familiar with Dr. Bruce Perry, but he just wrote a book called What Happened to You? He's done a lot of great work in this developmental neurobiological approach to clinical work. Our behavioral health staff have begun training on the neuro-sequential model. The assessment looks at developmental risk, adversity, and resiliency, your developmental needs and strengths, and provides treatment considerations to guide clinical work through a trauma-informed lens. The neuro-sequential model considers brain development, relational, and cultural connections into the assessment process and supports intervention planning that's culturally sensitive and developmentally appropriate. Individual therapy continues to be provided using a psychodynamic and behavioral therapies and will include evidence-based practice models, such as motivational interviewing, interpersonal psychotherapy, seven challenges, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, and CBT. The youths will continue to meet with their current behavioral health therapist to ensure a continuum of care. Additionally, family-based interventions using multi-dimensional family therapy will be provided by the therapist to support strong family connections and relationships, as well as offer family or caregiver support. Young parent support will be an integral part of behavioral health services for youth and young adults as well. Sexual behavioral health treatment, sexual behavior treatment services will be delivered by a contracted provider. And lastly, our behavioral health clinicians will continue to provide substance use and mental health care based on screening and assessment. Next slide. So the youth and family engagement begins from the moment the youth is committed. Within the first forty-eight hours of commitment, the program manager, myself, and the rehab counselor connect with the youth to provide overview of the program, explain the child and family team meeting process, obtain releases of information, identify family or natural supports, explain the individualized rehabilitation plan or the IRP process, and discuss the transfer to the secure track unit. Within the first seventy-two hours, the reentry support counselor meets with the youth to conduct vocational assessments and reuse the educational vocational track opportunities. The assigned group counselor and supervising group counselor will also meet with the youth during this time period to provide an overview, review unit expectations, and brief orientation. I then contact the family and the supports that the youth have identified to introduce myself, explain the process, explain the individual rehabilitation plan, and schedule the CFT, or the Child and Family Team Meetings, around their availability. Within one week of the commitment, the first CFT is held, and then by the fifteenth day, we have another CFT. Next slide. Again, the CFT team is-
Grace, pardon the interruption. I just want to get a time check. How many remaining slides do you have?
Um, not that many. We have about maybe five or six.
We have five slides left.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. So again, the CFT is created in support of the youth. The entire CFT process is youth-centered, where the family and supports are asked to provide input. As a facilitator, I emphasize to the youth and family the importance of expressing their needs because they're a part, they're the experts, really, of their lives. And although the professionals at the table have conducted their assessments based on their respective fields and have given their recommendations, ultimately, the youth and family know exactly what they need. And it's because of this that the CFT is an imperative collaborative effort. This process ensures transparency and accountability. The youth's parent and family voice and choice are assured throughout the entire process. Some of the feedback that we've already received from the youth and caregivers is that they're extremely grateful for the meetings as they've allowed an opportunity for them to receive information, ask questions, and partake in the development of their rehab plan. Parents have expressed a deep appreciation for the many opportunities offered to their son and the chance that they have been given to change their lives. So next, I'll hand it over to Holly, who will speak about the facility.
Great, thank you. As part of Senate Bill eight twenty-three, there was a small pocket of money that was set aside to award one-time grants to counties for the purpose of providing resources for infrastructure-related needs and improvements to assist counties in the development of a local continuum of care. The probation department applied for and was awarded three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to address the confinement of youth. And what you'll see is this competitive grant is going to allow the county to soften the look and feel of the designated living environments within the juvenile hall, to the extent feasible. None of the Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grants were earmarked for renovations in juvenile hall. But what we are planning to do is really consider a trauma-informed design. And so what you'll see on the slide are photos that represent some of the ideas and examples from the architectural design firm of what could be implemented in juvenile hall. All youth will have single occupancy rooms. There'll be an expanded lounge and relaxation area. They'll have their own classroom. There'll even be a room for specific behavioral health services with privacy, where it's a warm, safe, comfortable environment. A wellness room, having a visiting family room, and to do some modifications for the outdoor areas. What you'll see, it'll have a very dorm-like feel. And we're also really excited, we've gotten some early feedback from youth who are currently there. And what you'll see is these are pictures currently from juvenile hall to give you an idea of the attempts to kind of repurpose juvenile hall. As you know, since we are, is currently the only facility available due to the bond situation, we are, have done some really great things with a particular space. And some of the feedback, early feedback we got from youth was more sense of autonomy. Really, for example, having access to snacks and drinks when they're hungry and not waiting for certain times. So the staff in juvenile hall and behavioral health have created this little kitchenette where youths have open access to drinks and snacks. They're out of their rooms almost all day long, really interacting and being supported and integrated by staff inside the facility. One of the important things about this initiative is really collecting good information and being able to have it data-driven to get not only that qualitative voice from youth, but also to track outcomes. What we're using for this particular project is the results-based accountability framework. So we're going to be looking at how much was done, how well did we do it, and are the people that we serve better off? We will be collecting typical program information that you would expect for us to collect regarding demographics, case information, looking at MFTs, CFTs, looking at assessment data. Are youths meeting their goals? How are they progressing through program phases? Looking at dosage information regards to all the intervention programs. But in addition to the outcome measures required by the Welfare and Institutions Code, we're also committing to looking at information that will look at three key things. We want to ensure there are no net widening impacts and commitments to the local program compared to the commitments to DJJ. We also want to protect against any increase in adult court prosecutions of youth in the county. And finally, we want to ensure that we monitor any racial and ethnic disparities to try to reduce the impact of youth of color compared to white youth. And we're very committed to those three data points and work closely with the JJC to present information when available. Specific outcomes. So this was actually a quote from one of our stakeholders, which I think is very important when we talk about outcomes, is that everyone is someone's child. And we all look at this, again, we go back to our four pillars, four values that we talked about before. You'll see those reflected in the outcomes that the group has kind of committed to. The first one is youths have a sense of hope for their future, and they feel valued. Strength in family and natural support relationships, improved housing safety and stability, reduction in new offenses, improvement in well-being, and the reduction in trauma-related issues, improved school and meaningful and sustainable employment, and changes within system partners, holding ourselves accountable to see where we can do better and what's working. Next steps. The probation department is here today to present to the board of supervisors so you have the needed information when making funding allocations and other related decision points. We will go back to the JJC Subcommittee in November. The plan is due to OICR the first of January two thousand twenty-two. And then after the plan is submitted, the probation department is committed to a collaborative, inclusive process to work towards the development of a long-term plan and looking at various options for step-down models to a less restrictive facility or placement as appropriate for the youth in our care. And now we'll have an opportunity to answer any question.
And everybody, just for the record, I'm back. But I'd like Vice President Ellenberg to please continue running the meetings as my presence may be intermittent. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. President Wasserman, thank you all so much for the report. This really is a dramatically new direction for our county. I want to thank Chief Garnett and her staff for the very comprehensive presentation. And thank you, Chief, as well for continuing to center directly impacted kids and visiting with them to solicit direct input. This is exactly, I think, the best approach we could ask for. And I know that we've been in this together since the governor signed SB eight two-three a little over a year ago. And just want to reiterate again that I'm very grateful for our partnership as I've been working on the DJJ realignment at the California State Association of Counties as our board representative. So thank you for the report. I don't have questions today, but glad to turn to my colleagues. Supervisor Travis.
I would just want to say thank you. I know we have a couple of public speakers, but I just wanted to say very sincere thank you for the work. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? If not, we'll go to the public, please.
Our speaker is Paul Sotoy. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute. You will have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Yes, Paul, from the horseshoe. I spent from seventy-nine to eighty-five in and out of juvenile hall. I never made it to YA or to the Boys Ranch. But I have to tell you that whoever, somebody who's listening, you're getting it. And the way that you set it up, the very humane environment, to where the person doesn't feel like they're being punished. You know, these are kids. You know, they're coming in saddled with all of these kinds of issues that, you know, have generational impacts. And to have that compounded in my generation by, like, there was something inherently wrong with us. We didn't have the kinds of programs that you have outlined here. And just, I cannot thank whoever designed these programs enough for the humane approach that you took. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Bigelow. Organize Silicon Valley debug and work with families who have loved ones who go through the juvenile system. We are participate and have been actively participating in the eight twenty-three Subcommittee and the working groups. I know the board is not making a decision, but want to plant the seed that we're asking for the board to reject this plan and ask the Subcommittee to come back with a temporary plan that does not involve juvenile hall. We acknowledge the time constraints because DJJ stopped intake. But this Subcommittee has been meeting for over six months. And there's been enough time to come up with a temporary immediate solution that did not involve juvenile hall. And here we are. The community's been very clear about not wanting to use that facility and for that to not be the floor. And it doesn't seem to have been incorporated into this plan.
Next speaker is Ron Hanson. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, good afternoon, supervisors. I want to compliment probation, the community partners that have worked with the Subcommittee, as well as all the others in the juvenile justice legal system, the court, the public defender's office, and the DA's office, for putting together a, what I believe to be a very strong program that will serve the needs of the youth that are committed there and that this is not the end, this is the beginning. And I look forward to looking at this program again as it matures. Thanks so much for your work.
The next speaker is Sparky Harland. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, Sparky Harland, CEO, Bill Wilson Center. As we have the conversation about not building the new jail, I think you all are going to know that for almost forty years, I've been trying to reduce population in juvenile hall, not increase it. And even though it might look nicer on the inside, it's still a jail. There's still four walls that kids cannot get out of. Kids are still suicidal when they're locked up in jail more than twenty- Kids are still suicidal when they're locked up in jail more than twenty-four hours. So I really beg you to consider more alternatives than just making juvenile hall, quote, trauma-informed and to look better. We need more community alternatives, including more residential alternatives. Please don't just accept more jail for our young people. Thank you.
Next speaker is Victor Vasquez. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Afternoon, Victor Vasquez at Somos Mayfair. Our families participated in some of these input sessions. It was clear from our perspective that young people should not be involved in any kind of jail or policing intervention at this point. We believe that racism and injustice and unjust policies create the conditions for incarceration. It leads to criminalized behavior when someone is hungry, poor, struggling, being displaced. You have feelings and those feelings could become self-blame. Or we are put in a position that we must take action by any means to, to survive. And so when that happens, solutions like jails, like involving the police are normalized and we end up suffering in our neighborhoods. So we believe that some of these elements are great. We should be working with the city and the, and you all to make sure that we have many youth centers, many interventions for young people outside of the streets, no jails.
Next speaker is Margie Estrada. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I think the key word is less restrictive programming. That's according to the law, SB eight twenty-eight. If you look at it, it doesn't mean there has to be juvenile hall. Juvenile hall is not set up or meant to house youth long-term. Judge Lou said on her colleagues also supported through a letter that she does not support long-term housing at juvenile hall. We needed to come up with different solutions. What was presented to the state of California was just a placeholder. It was not set in stone. This is a working document. We gotta, we gotta find other resources, other places for kids instead of juvenile hall. And, and if you look at trauma-informed lands, juvenile hall is not the right placement for youth. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Alex. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So having worked with youth involved in both DFCS, so Child Welfare and the Juvenile Justice System for almost four years, I feel like this is something where we have a truly amazing opportunity to completely redefine what juvenile justice can look like. In the short time getting to attend some of the meetings around this topic and working directly with families and community providers, while it is heartening to see that we've added many more community stakeholders and families to these discussions, what I'm really seeing and hearing is we need to have an overbalance of community members versus professional stakeholders in determining what this could really look like. Really getting outside of the system to redefine what juvenile justice looks like from a community and, and family standpoint.
Next speaker is Walter Wilson. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Walter Wilson. I'm a chair of this county CCLM. But I'm speaking specifically for myself. And, you know, it's almost as though the people who created these great programs and did all this work to put together these, these far-reaching, brand-new ideas didn't listen to the community. And that's unfortunate because if they had, they wouldn't have not included juvenile hall, that facility in this process. And it's unfortunate because there's so much good that's come out of, that will come out of the work that they're talking about doing. But the deal is juvenile hall is not a place where we want to put our children if you plan on having anything positive come out of it. Because the deal is a pig is still a pig. I don't care if you put lipstick on it. And that's the case here. We, we, we cannot have our children in that facility. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Lori Valdez. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Lori Valdez with Just for Josiah. And I'm calling to ask the Board of Supervisors to not think about doing another juvenile hall. Our children deserve better. Where we need trauma-informed is in our schools. Before they get there, our teachers need to know how to recognize trauma. So they're not funneling these kids to the school-to-prison pipeline. We have to get them when it first starts. And we have to do the interventions before it gets to that point. When it gets to that point, you're just adding more trauma to these children because they don't deserve to be treated like animals locked up in cages. They're children, they're somebody's children. And the people who are there supposed to be watching them, they're abusing the children, forcing them to do things, come out of their rooms that if a parent was to do that, it'd be child abuse. But because the state says it's okay, it's not child abuse, but it is. So please think about the children before they go there. Don't lock them up. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Are there further additional comments from supervisors? And if not, I will turn to Supervisor Chavez, who pulled this off of consent for any final comments and/or motion.
I move that we receive all three reports with our gratitude to the staff. And, you know, I, so anyway, that'd be a motion and then I'll make a quick comment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Lee.
And my only quick comment is that I think that, you know, we're going to be, I, I think it's going to be really critical that we get an opportunity to have success in this environment and move creatively from here. I want to thank you Supervisor Ellenberg for really, you know, taking, taking a look at how this can be something that is really reflective of our community values. And, you know, I, I did hear all the speakers. I, I just want to reinforce that these are young people who've committed relatively serious crimes. And so I, I think that starting where we're starting is actually a very, very good place. So thank you.
I will just then add to that before I, I call a vote. I, I don't think any of us want to see children confined in, in these very prescriptive ways. One of the things that I am extraordinarily concerned about is not having children sentenced to adult prison. And a very substantial risk exists that if we do not have a local secure track facility that meets the expectations, frankly, of the district attorney in the court, then they are, I, I can't say likely, I won't speak for them, but, but their conclusion may be then to send the kids to adult prison, which is an absolutely unacceptable outcome in my view. So I think what we're trying to do here is really mitigate harm to the greatest extent possible. I'll note that we need to have the plan submitted by January, but that it can be reviewed and amended at any time. So I appreciate the work of staff. I appreciate my colleagues and all of the, the members of the public who, who weighed in today. You're, you're not wrong, in my view, in the supervisor's view. So with that, let's do a roll call, please.
That the motion is to receive the report from the probation department to approve the request for the appropriation modification and to ratify the attestation form for the county of Santa Clara, signed by the county executive?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Lee?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
I.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Wasserman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more items to go through before we begin the, the conversation around item thirteen, which is redistricting. These two items have been removed by consent by Supervisor Chavez. So let me turn to you for item seventy-three, which is adoption of an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors amending chapter nine of Division B eleven of Title B of the County of Santa Clara Ordinance Code relating to garbage and refuse.
Vice President Ellenberg, if you don't mind, I'd like to retain, get back.
You got it. Make the gavel, sir.
My chairmanship for now. And I appreciate you standing, standing by. Thank you Supervisor Chavez.
This was actually pulled by Supervisor Semidion.
Supervisor Semidion.
My apologies.
Thank you, no worries. Mr. Chairman, if staff is available. I pulled these items because I have three questions slash concerns that I want to raise publicly. As I understand it, essentially, staff has said we have some new legislation from the state regarding waste management, garbage. And we need to have ordinances in place to conform to that state mandate. Let me just ask, who's the right person to address my questions to? And also to confirm that my understanding is correct about why we're being asked to head down this path.
Joe Center, head of the CIPA is the right person to ask.
Welcome, Joe.
Good afternoon supervisors.
Hi.
I'm here to ask a question. We also have a county council here for, to answer some of the legal.
Thanks, Mrs. [inaudible]. My, I've got three, three concerns. The first is it sounds like we are now going to have people rummaging through other people's garbage, which raises some privacy concerns. It also gave me some comfort to know that there was a plan to provide notice to customers of some changes in the requirements for customers. But candidly, we've struggled with notice in the past as a county and only to discover that what staff thought was adequate notice wasn't sufficient to really get the word out. People still felt blindsided, even though we admit the technical requirements of providing notice. And the third piece is I understand that there's no expectation of a cost increase. But if we're asking our waste haulers to do something differently or new than they've done in the past, my recollection is that there's a provision in their contract that allows them to say, we're entitled to more money. And I'm remembering that when we had a change in recycling practices as a result of changed behavior by China. All of a sudden, our board had a higher rate in front of us. So my first question is privacy-related. Who's going to be rummaging through who's, who's garbage? Could we just get that part out there straight?
Yes, certainly. So this is a chosen tech with the Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency. The state law requires that the local jurisdiction, and this is pertaining to unincorporated county, which is about sixteen thousand residential customers and about five hundred businesses counted throughout unincorporated all districts. The state law requires that we provide services for organic waste collection, which is basically things that rot food, paper, to get that organic waste out of the landfill to reduce the greenhouse gas methane. The, it requires a monitoring program. All local governments have to have a monitoring program. In this case, the standard monitoring program is for the local government to review ten percent of the customers every year to make sure that they're getting the organic material out of their garbage cart and putting it in one of their other two carts they have that would recycle the material. So we're required to do ten percent of the customers in calendar year twenty twenty-two. And I, as you mentioned, for, this would largely be lid flipping of the garbage cart out after it is set out for collection. It would be done at least the first year by county staff in CIPA. The, if we're able to get ninety percent of residential and commercial customers with organic waste service, we can request the state to stop doing the more customer-by-customer assessment in twenty twenty-three. And we're well underway to be able to do that already. All residential customers have access to organic waste collection already now. They've had it since the beginning of these contracts. So that's already in place. So that's a hundred percent of residential. And then we're well underway of getting the commercial customers subscribed. So after twenty twenty-two, we'll ask the state to go to a more route-level monitoring system, which does not require us to go customer-by-customer to, to flip garbage lids and look inside and see if they have material in there. Yes.
Ask you to pause there so I can drill down on that. So if we have to monitor, which I think is another word for look inside somebody's garbage pail, yes?
Yes.
Then ten percent of sixteen thousand is sixteen hundred residences. So does that mean that county staff will be, forgive my phrase, poking around inside sixteen hundred garbage cans in sixteen hundred residences, looking to see whether or not the residents have properly complied with the organic waste directive?
Yes, we're not going to be moving the stuff in the cart. We're going to be opening it up and looking what it looks like on the top and then using that for education. And I, after the first year, we're well underway to go to the less invasive component of the law where we can do it on a more route basis and don't have to go house by house. But the first year, there's no out for that house by house look.
So if somebody went to, if one of our team from the county, from CIPA, went to a residence and found organic waste in the garbage can, I'm thinking, if I remember correctly, coffee grounds and eggshells, for example, are organic waste, yes?
Yes.
Okay, and if they're in the garbage can, what happens to the offending homeowner?
We would just leave them a note saying that, reminding them of the law and asking them to put the material in either the recycling cart or the yard waste cart.
Okay. And what happens if week after week they decline and they continue to throw out their organic waste in their garbage can?
We would just, all we're doing is education and behavioral change. So we do not need to enforce that part of the law. But we're requiring, we're required to do the monitoring and to do the education. And fortunately, every city's in the same boat. So we'll be sharing a lot of material and, and hopefully doing, uh, being able to standardize some of that messaging across the county on this.
So I know as much as you encourage people to shred their documents and exercise care, you know, I think most people have the expectation that once they throw something in the garbage, nobody's going to be rummaging around through it, looking at it. Do we have any privacy directives, directives for your staff that say, hey, while you're there reading other people's mail, for example, or financial documents is not allowed, prohibited? Anything we can or are already doing to make sure that people are privacy-sensitive?
Certainly, I mean, already, most people recycle, use the, put, separate their paper and put it in the, the recycling cart that they already have. And the way people typically protect their private is either they, they tear the, the paper to get rid of their address or confidential information, or they mark the material out. So that's how people typically do that, that have been recycling paper in the recycling cart. Our staff will be instructed not to read that thing. But all they're really doing is opening the top of the cart and seeing what they see from the top. So they won't be touching the material, they won't be reading the material. They'll just be doing that quick look.
Thank you. I'll move on to the next piece of my question, which is, my understanding is that there's a plan to send out, is it one notice or is it more than that?
Yeah, we've already been notifying customers of the change. For residential customers, there, there is no service change. So they, it's the three carts. That system is already compliant with the new state law. So they, they won't be sorting the material differently from, from, for going forward, except for the issue of the organic waste that they're putting in their garbage cart needs to either go in the recycling cart or the yard waste cart. So there's no service change for them. So it's really just that very specific behavior change of put it in the yard waste cart or the recycling cart if it's clean paper.
I could just tell you that if I were to glance out a front window, and I don't think I'm unique or unusual in this regard, and suddenly saw people rummaging through my garbage or inspecting my garbage from the government, I'd sort of say, what on earth is going on? And with sixteen hundred folks, I think you're going to have some folks who think, what on earth is going on? So I'll come back to that in a moment, Mr. Chairman. And then what is, what if anything are the obligations on the waste haulers themselves? Or are there none really in this instance?
There's none in this instance. They provide all the compliance services. There's none in this instance. They provide, all the compliance services are already in their base contract, so they're not providing any additional services.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I have answers to the questions I wanted to ask. Thank you, Ms. Intec. I'm going to abstain on today's items. I have concerns about privacy implications, not withstanding the fact that this is a state mandate. I do want to encourage the staff to make sure they have some sort of written formal privacy directive that they can say that they have, truthfully say that they have shared with the county staff who's involved in this process. I also want to encourage staff to step up the noticing efforts. I just think with all the noise in the background, folks are not likely to process this information if it's tucked in the middle of a newsletter or a card about other issues. And I think we know from experience that as much as it may seem a relatively pedestrian activity, garbage pickup is something people take sort of seriously. They think of it as a core service. And they react when things don't go according to expectation. So with that, I'll be an abstention today, mostly as a way to register my concern that we get this right and not create a problem for ourselves during the course of the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Semidion. Do I have any other comments or a motion? James, can we put seventy-three and seventy-four together, or because they're ordinances, we do them separately, I presume?
You can take them in one motion to approve both seventy-three and seventy-four.
Okay, thank you. Nancy, could you please let our speaker in, and then we'll take, we'll consider taking both in one motion?
Actually, Supervisor Lee, I'm ready to make a motion to, for both seventy-three and seventy-four to adopt ordinance.
Okay, we'll take the motion from Supervisor Lee first, and I'll look for a second, and then we'll turn to our speaker. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ellenberg, thank you. And now Nancy, if you'll let our speaker in, please.
Our next speaker is Kimmy. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute. You have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking. Kimmy, can you please unmute yourself? Kimmy is not responding, and that is our only speaker.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Lee, a second by Ellenberg for the adoption of the ordinance in seventy-three, the adoption of the ordinance in seventy-four. They were introduced in reading I'll say was waived. Preliminary adoption is today. Final adoption is on December seventh, Pearl Harbor Day for both. Nancy, please.
Oh, yeah. May I make a comment, President Westerman? Sorry.
Oh, yes, of course.
All right. I just want to mention that this item has been heard through the RWRC, and the change will help the incorporated area falls in line with the requirements of the SB thirteen eighty-three to divert organic waste from our landfills. To achieve this, our staff within the Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency, specifically the Recycling Waste Reduction Division, have been working with existing franchise agreement vendors to implement these organic waste division by spending the utilization of the green bins for both yard waste and organic foot waste. The county is working with vendors to conduct onsite outreach for all tier-one commercial edible food generators such as supermarkets, grocery stores, food distributors, wholesale vendors, institutional food service providers, of which there are approximately twenty within unincorporated Santa Clara County, to make sure they have the appropriate containers of the nation's streams and education, so that they are able to comply with the new state requirements come January twenty-twenty-two. We have also reached out to all vendors to make sure that appropriate language, specific outreach and services are available, so that all population are able to better understand the new requirements. Currently, the, all the data compilation that's required to produce or require reporting information for CalRecycle is being handled by John Venture, who is a contracted agent handling this project, and has handed over to county staff to transmit to CalRecycle. And this is only at the educational phase right now, and there won't be enforcement phase for at least another year. I just want to make that comment, and thank you.
Thank you. That was an excellent report. Whoever appointed you to the Recycling and Waste Commission really knew what they were doing. And with that, Nancy, if you'll please call for the vote.
Supervisor Lee?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yeah.
Supervisor Semidion?
Abstain.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Westerman?
Yes, as well. Thank you very much. Nancy, if I'm incorrect, please correct me. That leaves us with item number thirteen. You see that?
That is correct.
All right, everybody, we're taking a five-minute break right now. I will see you in five minutes, and then we'll address thirteen. Thank you.